From their website, a friendly sign that let children and families know that they will or will not be handing out candy. Students interested in participating in the Veterans of Foreign Wars Voice of Democracy Scholarship Program must submit their essays and entry forms to O N W Winter Junior V F W Post forty-two forty-one at post four-two-four-one V F W at gmail dot com by Friday, October thirty-first, to be included. Bremen Township is open for appeals through November twenty-first. If you need help filing your appeal, please complete and return an appeal form to taxpayer advocate Grace Bartus at City Hall no later than November seventeenth. The eligibility requirements for the Cook County Homeowner Relief Fund have been expanded to include property tax increases of at least thirty percent in any of the tax years twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, and the application deadline has been extended to Friday, October thirty-first. For details, go to visit H R F dot Cook County I L dot gov. Stag High School Music Boosters invites you to its Art for the Season or the Season for Arts and Crafts Festival on November fifteenth from nine A M. to four P M. and November sixteenth from ten A M. to three P M. The event includes vendor booths, lunch, food samples, raffles, and entertainment, and admission is three dollars. Any other announcements from the Alderman? Okay, we'll move into citizens' participation. Anyone in the audience that would like to address the city council, please come forward. We would need your name and address for the record. Anyone interested? Okay. I need a motion to establish the consent agenda. Alderman McCarthy made the motion. Alderman Wolf, second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Keeler.
Yes.
Alderman McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Wolf.
Yes.
Alderman Coons.
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Okay, the consent agenda. Consideration of the following list of bills dated: regular bills and supplemental bills, fiscal year twenty-twenty-five through twenty-twenty-six. Consideration of the following minutes: City Council meeting seven-twenty-two, twenty-five, and eight-twelve, twenty-five; Planning and Zoning Commission, eight-six, twenty-twenty-five, and ten-one, twenty-twenty-five; Cable Commission, nine-eleven, twenty-twenty-five; Civil Service Commission, eight-fourteen, twenty-twenty-five, and nine-twenty-nine-twenty-five, twenty-five; Consumer Protection Commission, nine-ten, twenty-twenty-five, and ten-nine, twenty-twenty-five; Emergency Telephone System Board, nine-twenty-two, twenty-five; and Senior Commission, six-eleven, twenty-twenty-five; Veterans Commission, nine-eighteen, twenty-twenty-five. Any questions on the consent agenda? Okay, roll call, please.
Need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. We need a motion to accept the consent agenda. Alderman Coons made a motion. Alderman Keeler, second. All right. Now, any questions on the consent agenda? Roll call, please.
Alderman Coons.
Yes.
Alderman Keeler.
Yes.
Alderman McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Wolf.
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Okay. Administration approval of the City Clerk appointment of Kelly O'Hara Lynn to the part-time position of deputy city clerk. Need a motion? Alderman McCarthy made the motion, second. Alderman Wolf. Madam Clerk, do you have anything you want to say?
Please say yes. That's about it. I need her.
New person to help in City Hall. Any other questions? Alderman Wolf.
This is, this is an assistant to your position?
Yes. So if she is going to be at City Hall five days a week, part-time, no more than twenty hours a week, she'll be here. So if I'm not available, she has authorization to sign things in my behalf or cover me if I can't do the meetings. She would be here instead of me, instead of Moses. So she's just basically my backup.
Okay.
That's actually how I started. I started here as a deputy city clerk, and when Jack resigned, I finished his term. The position did exist before this.
Yeah. And I take it the interview process went smooth?
Bridgette, I was unable to attend the interview. I did meet her, but I did not attend the interview. Bridgette interviewed her, and so she's more than qualified.
And how many hours you putting in, though?
Too many.
And the others?
No, it's business license renewal time, so it is very busy right now. I could show you the stack back there that I just found. It's pretty busy. It's a busy time of year. And then she would also, the deputy clerk would also help with the liquor licensing as well. It would be me, what I used to do. You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Wolf.
Yes.
Alderman Coons.
Yes.
Alderman Keeler.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is passed.
Okay. Next. Approval of the twenty-twenty-six fireworks display contract with Mad Bomber Fireworks Productions. City Council to also provide direction concerning display date. So we're putting a motion together to accept the contract with Mad Bomber is what this is, and then after that, we can have a quick conversation about the timing of what the fireworks are going to be because we've been juggling that date around, and we want to need a little support from you guys on what you're thinking. So first of all, I need a motion for to accept the contract for Mad Bomber, for the fireworks for twenty-twenty-six. Alderman McCarthy made the second motion. Alderman Wolf, second. Okay. Now, questions?
First thing, I mean, the contract itself doesn't have the date on there, right? Or it is a date other than the Fourth of July?
We've had discussions with Mad Bomber about specific dates, but...
It is actually on here.
And the contract...
And what's the date on that contract?
The agreement is June twenty-seventh.
Okay.
Which is actually in the memo, says it's unavailable to a pre-existing event at Gaelic.
Well, that contract, I just wanted to know what the contract essentially said for the date because the twenty-seventh is the week before the Fourth of July, like we just did last year. Correct? And that's why that contract, they normally put it out there. The rates change based upon when that contract is, too. So I just want to confirm the contract, and if you're, if you're saying that we're still looking for dates, how can we confirm the contract?
Well, at this point, I know the discussion Moses and I had after he talked to Gaelic Park about the twenty-seven, and they have a wedding going on at the same time, so it didn't sound like it was, it was going to be, going to be a good fit for us to be able to control. So...
Well, they have one there before.
The last, the last time, right?
Right.
Yeah.
So I don't know how this would be any different than what went on last time. You know, they have parking for the wedding up to a hundred and ninety-six stalls, and Gaelic is saying, based upon the amount of people, they expect a hundred and fifty cars. So they got ample parking within their own lot. It's not going to take away same as the prior wedding.
From what I read on the email from Moses, too, I think they're more worried about controlling the ingress and egress, not so much the wedding itself, but the police being able to control what's coming in and out, and if you have a wedding at the same time, I guess it's too much. So I think that's why they're looking to have it on a date that nothing else is going on.
Well, their ingress and egress is totally separate from where Gaelic Park's main entrance is.
Yeah, no, I agree, but that's the reasoning.
So with the proper signage, no one's going to Gaelic Park to go, "Park." So who's watching that? I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, the reality is this time that the city is taking full control for the planning and the security of this, where before we were using one of our commissions to do that. They were basically setting up the planning and all that through the Veterans Commission when we first got into it. So now the city is basically taking this in full-time for all, all the processes. So Alderman McCarthy.
I believe they had a four-year contract with these guys, so we just needed, I mean, we couldn't discuss the dates still, but I mean, they're going to give us that same price for four years is what I was talking to Paul about today. And so we kind of locked in, even if we moved a date, I mean, maybe a Friday would work, you know, instead of the Saturday if they're not doing anything on that Friday prior. I mean, we can, I mean, I totally agree with going, moving forward. I mean, we're not, the contract says the twenty-seventh, but we know that's probably not going to happen, so we can figure a date at a different time.
Well, that's what we're discussing today, too, is the date.
Yeah, and I believe Moses was looking to see if we could get some direction from, from the council on the date at that point. I mean, at this point, this is set up just to agree to the contract. We have a motion and a second. If there's any other questions? Okay, roll call.
Alderman McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Wolf.
Yes.
Alderman Coons.
Yes.
Alderman Keeler.
Yes.
Motion is passed.
So at this point, the twenty-seventh was one of the dates that we were looking at. Because of the, yeah, because of the, the wedding and that scenario, Moses was looking to see if he could get some direction from the council, whether he still wanted to stay with the twenty-seventh, or if we wanted to move it closer to the Fourth of July. I guess from what I understand, the Fourth of July itself is not open for Gaelic.
I think the Mad Bombers themselves.
Yeah, well, that, that probably is part of it also. Yeah, I agree with that, too. Yeah. So...
But, you know, the other dates that are mine, I mean, the, the alternatives I believe that were given was like two weeks before, like on the twentieth.
Right.
Too far away. It is a pretty nice event. It's the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary.
Right.
And they put on a good show, but to have it that early, to me, it doesn't make sense when the twenty-seventh can work. And, and it's a good thing to do this discussion now because if you recall last year, none of this was finalized until the police and already had determined their scheduling and things for twenty-twenty-six, which they haven't done yet.
Right. Yes.
It's a good time to do that so they can keep that in mind. Because after the Fourth of July, to have it on a Tuesday or a Wednesday, I think, were the two days I...
Yeah, I don't like that either.
During the week and...
No, it's, it's going to be a tough call each, each way you go. And I specifically asked Moses on the, for the date of the twentieth, I thought that was kind of a little bit too far ahead of what we need. Alderman McCarthy, did anyone look into Friday instead of the Saturday of the twenty-sixth, instead of the twenty...
Or is he upset?
If you're really concerned about a wedding, but again, I'm just stating, we had a wedding. I don't recall anything that came up.
An issue, yeah.
Of problems.
Well, I mean, we could, we can take this discussion and move it forward, too. So we've already okayed the contract itself, and we can move that forward. They were just certain... Alderman Keeler.
I don't know if the wedding was three-hundred last week, last year. It could only have been a hundred and fifty or people, fifty people or a hundred people. It might not have been three-hundred. Maybe they're just worried about having their personnel take care of the guests in there, too.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's really Gaelic Park that's stating that you can't have it on the state.
No, that, that was, yeah, no. Gaelic Park was, they seemed to be okay with the twenty-seventh. It just, we were, as a city, we were trying to make sure that there is a possibility of a date that would make more sense for just us and the, and the city of Oak Forest. And, you know, because of the way it's set up, I mean, there's, there's really not any really good dates because you're either going after the Fourth of July, or you're going way before. So I mean, it's something, as the city council, I'd like you to think about it at some point if you had any suggestions. You know, we can start talking when Moses is back next week about it again, so I think...
According, according to this, it says...
When's the parade?
I'm sorry. Didn't...
Are we having a city parade?
A city parade? Not that I'm aware of, no.
According to this, Gaelic, it says one week prior to the Fourth, they do have a three-hundred-person wedding, and they anticipate a hundred and fifty parking spaces being needed for the wedding.
Right.
So that's...
And there's a hundred and ninety-six in their lot.
It just says one week prior. It doesn't say the date.
Maybe we can find out, maybe we're lucky and it ain't Saturday.
Yeah, I think, I think we could probably, you know, just see about moving forward on it and, and have a couple of conversations when we get into...
We've got time.
Yeah, there's a little bit of time, so, anyway. All right, let's, let's move on then to, yeah, as far as the discussion with the, the timing, we'll table that and then get back to it. Okay. Building Department, approval and ratification of appointment of Mark Carlson to the full-time position of Property Maintenance Inspector. Need a motion? Alderman Keeler made the motion. Alderman Wolf made the second. Okay. Any questions? This is the job that we lost our Property Maintenance Inspector to Markham, and Mark is coming in as the new, new property inspector. No questions? Roll call.
Alderman Keeler.
Yes.
Alderman McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Wolf.
Yes.
Alderman Coons.
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Community Development, approval of ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash ten dash one-one-one five zero, authorizing a text amendment to update the following provisions of the City of Oak Forest Zoning Code, Section nine dash one-oh-two, accessory structures and uses, as well as Section twelve dash two-oh-six definitions in order to allow accessory dwelling units. Need a motion? Alderman McCarthy made the motion, second. Alderman Keeler. Paul?
Good evening, Mayor and Alderman. The only item I have here on the agenda this evening is accessory dwelling units as a text amendment into our zoning code. So what is the request before us this evening is a text amendment to allow for accessory dwelling units to our zoning code, chapter on accessibility or accessory structures and uses. Staff has received interest from a resident on the south side of Oak Forest without a clear plan for approval. We've discussed the following considerations that I will speak of before coming to planning and zoning with the text amendment after a few meetings and then bringing that tonight before you guys after a recommendation from planning and zoning. So just kind of an example to get people's understanding of, you know, what is an accessory dwelling unit. There is a number of different names for them, but technically, they're usually an, an additional space for someone else to reside in your backyard, you know. Oftentimes, there'll be a resident of, you know, your family, and in other cases, it may be a rental. What is, you know, an accessory dwelling unit by code is a small self-created or a self-contained residential dwelling unit that is secondary to a larger residential dwelling unit located on the same lot, so, such as your house and a smaller house behind that house. Other names for it are, you know, granny flats, carriage houses that were converted from, you know, for horses to, you know, actual living quarters, in-law suites, pool houses, and garden cottages. What the requirements that were brought before you guys this evening for requests include location no less than six feet from the property line. Only allowed one unit per lot, so a single-family home can only have one, and it would only be limited to those residential districts. And then design would need to be compatible with the primary structure, similar to how we handle garages, they, you know, that they're usually in, in some kind of comparable fashion, you know, including the siding, trim, roof materials, and et cetera. Occupancy, the requirement here would be that the primary resident that pays taxes on the property would have to occupy either the, the large home, the original home, or the accessory dwelling as a primary residence, proofing, you know, that they own it, that they're going to be there, maintain it, and occupy it so that it keeps up to requirements as would be required through code enforcement. And then lastly, the height of the structure could not exceed the height of the primary structure, so the, the original house, it can be taller than it, can be bigger than it, it's going to be accessory, too. And another additional requirement to think of, not specific to just this, but to any new development in a residential district, there is currently a lot coverage that no more than fifty percent of your property could be covered by impervious surfaces such as your house, garage, driveway, pool shed, patio, and sidewalks. So you include all of those things together. If you have enough space beyond that to construct something like this, not everyone does, and in order to do that, you know, some might have to lose a shed, some might have to lose this. If that's the constraints that they have to work with, this limits a lot of properties from being able to do that. You know, you live on a, a small fifty-by-fifty lot with a, you know, a normal-sized house, a shed, and a garage, then, you know, you're probably right there, if not over, and therefore would not be allowed to continue to improve any additional services without engineering plans and a zoning approval that would come before you guys for a variance nonetheless. Just looking at what other municipalities around us are doing, Homewood has approved of a allowance for A D Us, and it's been a three-year process. They haven't seen any additional applications. This doesn't necessarily mean you put it in there and then everyone is going to take advantage. This is a costly venture, no different than, you know, building a house. It's all the same requirements, no different than, you know, the current requirements of fire sprinkling, you know, providing water, sewer, and, and the gas and the like. It has to be a fully habitable space in order for someone to be able to occupy that. So, and then additionally, Oak Park, which is a, a different, you know, suburb than us, and even looking at theirs, has only seen ten permits in three years since they've started the process as well, too. So not necessarily a run-of-the-mill that people are going to take this as a financial advantage here. And as we could see, a wide variety of municipalities from urban to rural have permitted, permitted these types of structures. And to kind of reiterate back to where we started from, we had someone that was asking about this and inquiring, and if you currently look in the code, there is nothing that specifies the allowance of doing something like this. So ultimately, by not having that in the code to anyone reading it, we don't allow it. So by not saying anything, you know, there is no process for them to do that. I mean, typically, how something like that would go through at this point would be like a planned unit development for a single property, which is kind of a strange process and, and factor in to putting to these things in comparison to maybe the large developments that we have on Cicero Avenue or a subdivision that's coming in, having, you know, fifty-two homes. Doesn't seem to be the same exact process here as what we're looking into for these types of applications. So lastly, here, we spoke with planning and zoning, and they were kind of mixed between a, a couple of different concerns and then, as well as some support in, in other places. So a handful of the Planning and Zoning Commission members were concerned with the ability to rent out the, the accessory dwelling units. They really liked the idea of the first-time application of these things going through. You would have, you know, your, your grandparent, or you would have, you know, your, your significant other, or whatever, you know, the situation may be that's within your family to stick around, but after, you know, something may happen, or they may pass away, or you move out to the next person that takes that over, how does that function, you know, as a additional residence? You know, can it be utilized as a rental? And is that something that, you know, that they want to prohibit in comparison to, you know, allowing it and treating it no different than how we do for any other single-family rentals that we currently have in the city? You know, no different than the crime-free rental housing, a single-family home, whether it be, you know, next to any one of us here, it could be registered and, you know, rented out. So looking at, confirming with our legal counsel, our planning and zoning asks for this to be a pilot project in which the process would look like, after we finally got in that original application from the applicant that we were working with, would be to come back with a moratorium, which would not allow for any additional permits to come back and give that a time limit so that we could reconfirm and see if that's something that we want, if there's any additional requirements or other things that we need to take a look into. And so before us this, this evening is not necessarily direction on that. The approval tonight is the text amendment to allow them, but if that's something that you guys would like to see, then we would have to come back with a moratorium once we have that original permit application in hand. So with that, I will entertain any questions.
Questions?
Then, as well as, Mayor, I do have a, a member in the audience that wishes to approach the, the council whenever you're available.
Okay. No questions? Alderman McCarthy.
Like, if we allow them to build these on their lot, is this going to be like another house that they get taxed on?
So they will be assessed on the value of the house, no different than any building permit over a certain threshold. Goes against your house, gets sent to the assessor's office, and is re-identified on, you know, what the value is of your home, you know, the value of work that you put into it. And obviously, these being exterior, there's no way for them to happen overnight without people not noticing.
Okay.
If, yeah, and I, Alderman Wolf? Appreciate, you know, I look at planning and zoning's initial dilemma and things like that as far as the renting of this, because when initially, and maybe this is by a legal issue or whatnot, but it's like what it was presented initially was some type of caregiving for a family member that couldn't live on their own, right? And it was a place instead of putting them in a home, you know? I mean, I was fortunate enough, I mean, I kind of went through this when we had my mom come and live with us. At the time, I was fortunate, we were putting an addition in the house, and we were able to have care right there within our own facility on the main floor. This, we're talking about an extension to a home.
Right, the current allowance of putting additions or adding on an in-law suite, or, you know, whatever you want to call it, connection to your existing home, is something that would be currently allowed by code, wouldn't necessarily require any additional requirements, and kind of under the same understanding, you could actually on all of our single-family home lots are allowed duplexes. So subdivided a single-family home could be technically two separate residences living in that same home. Not to say that everyone's going to go home this evening and hurry up and rent out the other half of their home, but that that is an allowance that is currently, you know, available.
Duplexes, they normally, there's a homeowner for each one.
Somewhat. Some of them might be owned by the same one entity that rents out both of them, you know, if they're rental.
They could, and that's a topic for another discussion, too, as far as, you know, because when you are renting those out, too, there is no homeowner's exemption.
Right.
Ex purposes. And I don't know how this works, going down the line where we're putting a restriction on somebody that puts a home, one of these units on their property, and you mentioned, too, that owner of the property must live on the property. I don't know how that goes, if the house goes into foreclosure and you got another house there and another corporation comes by and wants to buy it, and then they rent it.
That's where we have the crime-free rental housing application, and that process is able to flag those properties, we're able to put those in our systems. They need to get, you know, verification that they would be allowed, knowing that they are trying to rent two places on one lot. And that would be something that we could easily, you know, investigate from that point. I, like I said, I'm looking at the examples of the ones that we have there. But I do think you bring up a good point, is talking of the idea of a family restriction is potentially an encumbersome issue that a buyer or a seller, you know, of a house, the next person may not have that same scenario. You know, they may see that and be like, hey, that's another opportunity for me to either make money, or I have a niece or nephew, or maybe my son's coming in for summer and I want to give him a spot, I don't have enough room anymore because we downsized, or whatever the scenario may be, or that mother-in-law or suite, whatever that, you know, mix is. But the, when we get to the problem of family and orientating who those people are, it becomes very difficult because it's, you know, the situation becomes a fair housing situation, no different than when we handled a similar case about a year ago, where we can't necessarily discriminate on one type of residential and not make that consistent with the way that we do with the rest of them. You know, preventing rentals in one capacity are potentially an issue if we don't handle every single one the same way.
You're talking about residential homes in general, right?
Yes.
That's a good topic that needs to be brought up here, too, and how we go about those. The thing here is that, you know, the moratorium, you know, to put it, if this was, you know, to pass and acceptable to change it here, to provide an individual the opportunity to do this, and then put a moratorium on it, and use that to see what possibly any additional regulations are necessary, I think we should be doing that beforehand. If we've checked out that out, and how these other communities may be regulating those as well.
That's basically where-
I don't see an abundance of a need, like you're saying, that people will jump out because there is so much you can put on the property in a lot of these homes, there are a lot of the property lines. You know, like you say, you got a pool on your yard, and you got a shed and everything else, you may even be close, you may even be close- Taking into consideration in the development of these, house, you know, the housing unit, taking into consideration, are we having a sidewalk that can go there, or some type of thing that's going to take more of a structure, that's going to require to look at it, that it's over its 50%, or a driveway to that house in the back, or anything else?
Yeah, well, and I think that would be intended to be reviewed at the building permit process to confirm any of those improvements, and if they give us a building that is, you know, right up to the 50%, and they say, hey, but we might want to do this, and we might want to do that, you know, I know the building department, speaking with them before, has cut people off and said, hey, before you start a project in that manner, know that you guys are right there at the limit, and any of those changes would require you to remove a structure or, you know, substitute one for another.
Any other questions? Paul, on the crime-free housing ordinance, if that changes in some way because in veto session, the legislator is looking into that, will that impact this at all?
Just kind of in the enforcement side, but when we are receiving them as building permits, and through that process, we will already be notified as soon as those come in. I think that will kind of come across the table as something different, you know, because they'll have to work on their tapping, you know, new water lines that will, you know, be pigged off of the existing structure of the house, as well as the sewer, you know, electric and all of that stuff. So it will be quite a tedious project. Obviously, they're talking architectural plans, you know, potentially engineering if there's necessary needs there. So there's, yes, quite a few steps that crime-free housing won't necessarily be the one that kicks it for us to realize who's, you know, living in these.
Okay. Any other questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman McCarthy?
So if we were to go along with, is this what we are going with then? The first one's going to be a trial?
So that's where I'm asking for some direction before you guys this evening is just the rules that we currently have put in place, which I have specified here with, you know, the location, number of units, the design, the occupancy requirement, and then the height.
Right, so if we were to go with what the planning and zoning was suggesting, I think that'd be a better idea than just approving it and moving forward.
Well, the thing is, is we'll be approving it and moving forward with the understanding that as soon as we get the application in process, that we'll come back with the moratorium to say that we're not allowing any more applications until we've, and that at that point, we'll have to figure, is that six months? Is that a year? How much time do we need to feel comfortable in? It would be nice, and I think that's where planning and zoning was more leaning, was beyond just the fact of looking into other ideas, but more just if he can get it built, and then seeing if there's anything else that they can think of that, you know, maybe had been missed, but you're not going to be able to see that, you know, residential component of it. You're not going to, you know, other than, you know, actually adding some restrictions on maybe, you know, sizing requirements, or, you know, some of those things, I think really their teetering was more on the rental standpoint of that, and how that will transpire from one resident to the next. But that's kind of where I brought it to you guys, so that you guys are aware of, you know, their recommendations, and then as well as what staff has originally brought to you guys.
Alderman Wolf?
If anything, I, you know, I can appreciate, and I look at the recommendation asked to definitely, you know, to have a moratorium provided after the first application is made. Again, it seems like by doing so, too, there's a lot of questions or regulations that we may learn from this to do this, and maybe we haven't expanded enough yet to really know whether this even works. That's, you know, and maybe-
Right, well, and I think another thing, though, to also mention and comment on as well, is beyond just the fact of allowing this, there is already existing structures of this kind within Oak Forest. So beyond just, you know, making those ones conform to the allowances that are now in put in time, they have one point in time, you know, back in an old time, there was either the allowance for it, or people doing them without, you know, permits or allowances, that, you know, they live to this day, whether they be above a garage, you know, a separate structure entirely, or, you know, a combination of the both.
And how many do we have like that?
I mean, I couldn't give you an exact number, but I think we get estimated somewhere between maybe five and 10. I mean, not to say that there's a plethora, but I think that also speaks to it as well, too, that just because we approve this tonight doesn't mean that everyone's going to be on Mike's desk tomorrow with, you know, a set of plans, approve their, you know, things. These things cost money, cost time, and as well as you got to have a good reason to be doing it. And even just doing the math of what it would cost you for rent versus, you know, financing, putting up, building the structure, take you well over, you know, 15 to 20 years to finance to make that worth, you know, the amount of money you put up front, which, you know, in most standpoint isn't worth the weight, but doesn't mean that people won't, you know, use it in that manner.
Alderman McCarthy?
Just so, I mean, I'm sorry, but, so the house can be as big as 50% of whatever the rules are for property-wise, right?
So as far as, you mean the lot coverage?
Yeah.
Yeah, the lot coverage, you, yeah, that includes, like as I said, any structures that would be, you know, impervious, so that you couldn't allow rain through, you know, a roof, concrete, you know, if you had some kind of permeable pavers that could work, but most pavers are not actually permeable, you know, a shed, pool, you know, all of those things that wouldn't allow water to run through it.
Okay, and then they still have to go through planning and zoning and get everything done, just like if they were to build a regular house?
So it would just go through a building permit, no different than, you know, if you were to get a brand-new house on an empty lot currently today?
Right, that's right, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Paul, you said you had another person to discuss this item. Could you give your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, and folks in the community. My name is Greg Brown. I am the manager of advocacy and outreach for AARP Illinois. One of, one part of my job is to track ordinances and legislation in Northern Illinois around things like ADUs as well as property taxes and all of those things. And when Paul and his team were in the process of their planning commission, we submitted a letter on behalf of the special rules supporting the addition of ADUs for members of AARP, mainly because this is a flagship issue, and I think the Alderman here mentioned that, that it's important for people to age in place, it's important for people to stay in the communities that they raised their family in and worked in and are part of. And so this is one of the main reasons why AARP is supporting the pilot, and you all have a good one, because I track this stuff all over Northern Illinois. Chicago just passed a pilot, and they're going ward by ward. So the Alderman literally approves the ADU in their ward, and we're afraid that it's essentially going to be a hodgepodge in the city. So just to give you all some flavor there, I wanted to share, we survey our members all the time. We have 600,000 members in Northern Illinois. We completed a survey in 2024 regarding ADUs, and I just wanted to share some information with you all. I also shared this in an official letter to the planning department that you have, but about 75% of adults over the age of 50 have considered living in an ADU. 64% of them want to stay close to their families, and this is, this gives them a great option. They want to use the ADUs because they need help in their daily activities. You mentioned your mom. I mentioned, I moved my mom in recently. I didn't have to make an addition, but I understand those accommodations and what it means to have a family close and being able to help you. Also, we looked at 54% of ADUs used in a way to reduce the housing costs of people as they age in place, this being an affordable option for them and their families. And the one that I like to share the most is nearly half of the adults in this survey, they weren't confident that their community could meet their housing needs as they move, as they age in place and be age-friendly. So that's, this is the main reason why AARP Illinois supports ordinance like this, so that people can age in place, age in dignity, and their families can be supported. So with that, I'd like to thank you all again for allowing me to make some comments here, and we look forward to continuing to work with the planning commission to, you know, help bring more age-friendly ordinances and activities to the Oak Forest community. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any other? Alderman Wolf?
I just appreciate everything that was said there, and what seemed to be stress, too, and I'm a believer, or whatnot, whatever you can do to assist a family member in need, or somebody that can't live on their own as a family member. I'm all for it, but we're expanding beyond that. Doing it that, okay, you know, mom passes away- Doing it that, okay, you know, mom passes away, maybe there's an aunt or an uncle or somebody, you know, but if you don't, now we can just rent it to anybody as long as I live here. And so then it's no longer what it was, purpose was and, and the intent was.
Right, totally understand that. And I think the hardest part with that will be, you know, and truly the enforcement of that, who's, you know, confirming that Joe, cousin Joe is actually your cousin by blood, not, you know, your friend's friend's friend that, you know, you went to high school with or something. That's, that's going to be the trickiest part because, you know, code enforcement isn't going to be doing, you know, that confirmation. You know, we do have the crime-free rental, so there is kind of that oversight to confirm, you know, who is that, that's being rented, but if it's a family, you're not going to be renting it out to it, so they won't even be signed up for the, the crime-free rental housing. So then it's kind of a freeloader situation where we have to hope that it is, but it might be off the books until you check Zillow, you know, when the next homeowner buys it. And that's going to be the, the tricky part is trying to enforce, you know, the first step beyond the first time that they need it. No different than any of the ones that exist.
Alderman Kuntz.
Well, Paul, it's, it's, it's just like, uh, saying also, you have condo complexes, so you're not supposed to allow renters. Eventually the city will get you and then you get fined and the person has to get kicked out because you're not supposed to and they enforce the code. Same thing with the housing. Eventually you're going to get caught because if the person in there screws up, they're out.
Right.
And then you're going to get fined and...
I think with the condos though, there is a condo association that you're, you know, is fully in the nose of who is coming in, you know, are they subdividing as their new face is coming in each day?
Right, but unfortunately, I was a president of one and it doesn't work that smoothly. Eventually, and if now the police come to the establishment, then yeah, then you're going to get out. Otherwise, most of the people, they're going to say they're a relative. Now who's going to say, Paul, you're not my cousin? I mean, it's not going to work that easy.
Right.
Until they do something wrong, which we've had done, and then the police come and then, then they get thrown out and you get fined. But, I mean, other than that, it's almost same concept with a house. So I mean, like you said though, unless you get busted, everything goes smooth.
Yeah. Yeah, so just to kind of follow up with, with some of those comments, our attorney did look into, you know, the family requirement and based upon the definition, I mean, this is just pretty much the way that we define it, it is no different than how we defined it when we were looking at, you know, the single-family home component, where it could be anything from, you know, a family to three under, you know, related individuals and just, you know, how exactly does that function? You know, fitting a, ADU with multiple random individuals is not something that we could even do just based upon the size and occupancy requirements. But as I said, you know, the issues there become the, you know, enforcement. And then secondly, you know, the issues and the hindrance of selling a property from one person to the next person, knowing that you have to have this kind of related situation in order for it to work there. And then otherwise, you know, that might just be sitting there vacant for a number of years because they built something that was helpful at one point, but isn't helpful for everybody, which doesn't necessarily mean that we can't go that route. I just am kind of playing the devil's advocate here on both sides.
Okay. We have a motion on this text amendment and a second. And then your roll call.
Alderman McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Wolf?
No.
Alderman Kuntz?
Yes.
Alderman Keeler?
Yes.
Motion's passed.
Okay, thank you. All right, next, anybody have any old business they need to address? Okay, anybody have new business?
New business?
Okay.
So this new business, we'll try to keep it quick here. This was just something discussed in Planning and Zoning Commission that we wanted to make sure city council was aware of. So we'll get into it. We've kind of heard different conversations with police, with staff, including public works, fire, building, et cetera, on street safety. And so the recommendation from public works was to make sure that we had elected official buy-in, and this was something that you guys wanted to kind of pursue and how we can make Oak Forest streets safer for all, for road users. So what we talked about with Planning and Zoning Commission about was kind of some of the challenges we're facing. Talking with police, they send out the radar trailer when they hear resident complaints and they receive a lot of resident complaints and conversations. We had people come to the city council meeting, and really what they've noticed is that it's the, the wide roads that, you know, are long and straight have some of the most speeding concerns, and this is backed up by a lot of the science. And you can kind of see this on Ridgeland, nearly 90%, or over 90% of all the vehicles were speeding. They were going above the 20 mile an hour speed limit. That's because Ridgeland, as you can see in the photo, it's a wide open road. It's one where the road is designed to drive fast. So if we want people to be driving the speed limit, if the speed limit is a reflection of the values of the city of that this is, we want, you know, it's a residential street, we want people to be driving slower, we need to make sure the design of the street matches that. You can also see this on Long Avenue where over 8,000 vehicles were speeding and the 85th percentile speed was 27 miles per hour. So that means 85% of the drivers were under that, 15% of the drivers were over that speed limit, or you're over that speed of 27 miles an hour. So why speeding occurs? Lane width, so as I was saying before, when you see the wide open lanes, it's a natural signal to your brain to go fast, sightlines and curvatures. For similar reasons, you know, if you see that long straight lines, it's like you're on a drag strip. You subconsciously, you know, as much as we like to think we're always focused when we're driving, I know even, you know, as people get tired, you know, a long day, the, the natural kind of subconscious of your brain takes over and the design of the road encourages the higher speeds. And we can also see this with the culture of safety, you know, if you had your, you know, focused brain, um, driving and you knew what your speed was the whole time, you're focused on the speedometer, everyone would be driving safely, but that's not the world we're living in anymore. And even with more enforcement, police have gone out and done details, but they don't have the same enforcement powers as they did due to state legislature issues. There's not the same culture of safety as there was in the past, and so that's why the design of the street really matters. So, and some steps for safety, talking with public works, they outlined have a, a step-by-step strategy for how one should go about making streets safer. So I think going from, you know, the least impactful to the most impactful. So kind of starting out with enforcement and signs, and so we've done this with the speed radar trailer, which tells you your speed and different police details, but what unfortunately we found out is that, you know, you have the policeman there, you have the, the trailer there for a week, people slow down for that week, maybe the next week they stay a little bit slow and by the, the end of the second week, it's back to normal again. And so that's where we're going as the next step is quick build or temporary pilot changes to see if those work, to see if that helps improve the speeding on the street. So we, to start this process off, we talked with St. Damian's. I frequently talk with the crossing guard there who's let me know that speeding was a big issue on that street, and so we talked with the principal and went over a variety of different potential measures to hopefully improve safety and decided upon a curb extension design. So that would be extending the curbs out, as you can see in the top image, and placing pylons to demarcate that. And we'll get into why this was the chosen measure and why the planning and zoning commission thought this would be a helpful tool. So just kind of to get some cost, you know, want to try to keep this cheap as a pilot project, really the goal was to use a bunch of existing funds as we already have budgeted for and have this be anywhere from, you know, a couple of weeks to a few months long, just to see, does this actually make a difference? You know, before making some sort of big investment in street design, want to demonstrate, does this work for Oak Forest drivers? So why do curb extensions in Erie work and why have they worked in other municipalities? Is because they allow people crossing to be more visible, to have more space to enter the intersection. It narrows the street, when we talk about, you know, the wide streets, make it easier to speed, the narrow streets increase the perceived risk and as a result naturally lower speeds. And this was seen in a federal highway administration study in Seattle where they did a road diet that include narrowing the travel lanes as well as adding curb extensions, and they found a 52% decrease in speeds and over a 40% decrease in pedestrian advice for collision. And we're not the only municipality doing curb extensions. The image on the bottom is from Blue Island. You can see how the, this is a permanent example where they did it with concrete and brick pavers. So the, the asphalt you can see in front of the image is the parking spots and they extended the curb out so you could cross the street a bit safer and doing, trying to implement that same logic with cheaper materials as a pilot project. So that's our overall goal. The Planning and Zoning Commission said that that was something they recognized was an issue as well and is why we brought it to you guys, to just get confirmation, get feedback, answer any questions. Didn't, we haven't gone through the engineering process or anything in-depth yet. Before we did that, wanted to make sure that there was interested buy-in and confirm that this was something that city council wanted us to continue to pursue.
Alderman Kuntz.
Why can't you just do like some of this places in the city do with school zones? They have cameras out there and believe me, I've never seen anybody speed on 103rd Street because you get a hundred dollar fine the first time, or warning, then it keeps going up and traffic's like that, you know, you don't have to worry about it by a school zone.
So that is something that...
And I think that'd be cheaper than spending all the money trying to do that, and plus you'd get revenue.
So if speed cameras are something that the city council wants to pursue, we can definitely go down that route. I do think, you know, speed cameras are, like, once you know about the speed camera, it's a code enforcement mechanism. If you have, you know, people who don't know about the speed camera, you can catch them and punish them, but you're not going to get first-time offenders. I could say in Chicago, I definitely know they're not always as popular as residents, that is why we didn't choose as our first one, but if that's something that...
Well, I would just like it for the school zones because by my house, they go through the stop sign left and right. So why, I mean, school zones are more important than basic streets like Ridgeland because you have more children around.
Yep, and that's why...
So, uh, who cares if they know they're there? At least you don't have to worry about your kid getting run over.
This is just a, an opportunity to have a quick discussion about this because this is something that the public has brought up extremely many times now since I've been, I've been here. So it's just an idea. We've had conversations, I think Hunter and I have had a couple of conversations. If we're doing anything that for, to try to slow down traffic, we got to make sure that we also can get our, our fire trucks and, and our vehicles through anything like this too. So it's just an idea to put it in front of you guys just to see, see, you know, that we're, we're trying to take a look at this and, and the community in general to try to, to try to get our hands around how the, the traffic flows, so.
Okay, anything else? Okay. Thanks, Hunter.
Thanks, Hunter.
All right, anyone else have any new business?
I have one. Just so you know, as, as we're aware, the seventh ward Alderman seat is vacant right now. I have right now one for sure candidate, and I got a call this week that there may be a second one. So I am working on putting those candidates together, there's some paperwork they have to fill out, and then what'll happen is I will be addressing the candidate to come to city council to basically get your approval at some point. So I'm hoping by the next meeting, we'll have that set up so we can get that seat filled and have a full council, so.
Okay, no one has any other new business? All right, I need a motion to adjourn. Alderman Kuntz made the motion, second. Alderman McCarthy, roll call, please.
Alderman Kuntz?
Yes.
Alderman Keeler?
Yes.
Alderman McCarthy?
Yes.
Alderman Wolf?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
We are complete for the evening. Thank you.